10th, 2022 work session.
Recording in progress.
The Walton City Council. First thing on the agenda is Walton's Transportation System Plan update.
Thank you. We have distinguished gentlemen coming forward, so Cody Fields. Steve Cooper are going to talk to you about the Transportation System Plan.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilors. So we're here tonight to talk about the update to the Transportation System Plan. Have a discussion about some of the next potential steps there. And as I understand it, it's been quite some time since anyone has come to speak to you about the Transportation System Plan, so we thought now is the time. We have a few key topics we want to hit tonight, so we thought it might be helpful to do a Transportation System Plans 101, just sort of remind everyone what the purpose of a TSP is and what some of the key components are. We'll do a quick status update on our current TSP before transitioning into a discussion of the primary reasons why we feel that a TSP update is appropriate now. Of course, you're used to me coming and talking about climate-friendly and equitable communities, so I have to, of course, work that into the presentation. I apologize for that. Then we'll talk about some of the goals and objectives and outcomes of a TSP update, provide a draft timeline and highlight some next steps. And then we will talk about our staff recommendation, which will be requesting direction from council to move forward with the next steps in the process. I have Mike and Steve with me here as the technical experts. I'll just be walking through the talking points, so if any key planning or engineering questions come up, feel free to shoot them our way and we'll try to take care of you. Okay, so what's a TSP and what do we use them for? And why do the local jurisdictions adoption, adopt them? So a TSP is a 20-year master plan for the city's transportation network. We develop these plans to highlight the various projects and programs and policies which are necessary to meet the transportation needs of the community now and in the future. So this plan really establishes that long-range vision for all of the components of our Transportation System Plan. The Transportation System Plan is both a planning document. We establish it to ensure that we're meeting the requirements and statewide Planning Goal 12, as well as state laws and metro rules. And it's also an engineering document, so has the technical details about how the system will be built. For example, this is where our street design standards live. And of course, any engineering questions, direct to Mike, he can help you with those. So a TSP generally contains several specific sections, some of which are required by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. TSP contains goals and objectives which serve as the guide and the framework for how the whole plan is put together and how we plan for the future. TSP also includes modal plans, financial plans, and policies, all of which are requirements. So within a TSP, you will find a road plan for the arterials and the collector roads, a public transit plan, a bicycle and pedestrian plan, a freight plan, transportation financing plan, and the policies and ordinances for implementing the TSP. Public engagement is also a critical component of the TSP update. And just to kind of give you a sense of what we've done in the past, in 2013 and 2014, when we last updated the TSP, staff encouraged residents, business owners, employees, and agency partners to participate in a variety of ways, whether that be on a transportation task force or a variety of work groups that inform that task force. There was also public engagement processes that utilized public open houses, forums, Spanish language outreach, online tools, and of course, city staff was out there in the community, attending events and educating people about the update and seeking input on transportation needs. Did I forget anything about what a TSP is? Are there any questions? Excellent. So why do we want to update our TSP now? The city is currently operating under a TSP, last adopted, as I noted, in 2014, with data from 2010 and 2012. So since the work associated with our last TSP is at least 10 years old now, and considering that a TSP is a 20-year plan, we feel that it is due for an update. We typically see agencies updating those TSPs every seven to 10 years, so we're right there at that threshold. And a lot has changed in Walton and in the region, so we want to make sure that that's captured in an updated plan so that we can respond appropriately. It's also relevant to note that Walton Moving Forward Bond Program is wrapping up, and we have either built or identified all of the projects under that program. So we need to begin identifying and refining additional project needs and developing a list of projects necessary to address those needs and ultimately build and maintain a well-balanced and efficient transportation system. Updating that project list, of course, will allow us to take advantage of funding opportunities as well as updating a financing plan. For example, a lot of the projects that we put forward in our M-Step process this year came from our TSP, so we want to make sure that our big projects continue to filter into that plan so that we can take fun, take advantage of those funding opportunities. Of course, transportation of all types continues to be a council and a community priority, so we want to provide the community with more opportunities to weigh in on what they feel is important. And we saw a lot of success with the public engagement with the Walton Moving Forward Bond in terms of hearing directly from the community about what they felt the needs were, and so we want to build on that success as we move into a Transportation System Plan update. We want to align the TSP with Climate Action Plan, which is in progress. The city's continued equity work and other state and regional plans. This is really a great opportunity to take a close look at the transportation system through an equity lens and a climate lens. And of course, we'd like to develop a final report with a highly engaging and easy-to-read intro and executive summary that uses effective graphics so that anyone, anywhere could pick up the plan and read it and understand it and understand the transportation system here in Walton. So our favorite topic, CFEC. The Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules, adopted, updated state transportation rules that will influence the way that local jurisdictions update their transportation system plans. And as of now, CFEC rules are applicable, so we need to be aware of the deadlines and the key sections that will apply to the city even as we wait to see how litigation shakes out. So we plan to stay in contact with our regional partners at DLCD, ODOT, and Metro to make sure that we have all the most current and relevant information there. DLCD has committed to working collaboratively with local jurisdictions. So updating our TSP now allows us the opportunity to tailor it to meet the CFEC rules in a way that best meets our community needs. And I think at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Steve to see if he has any additional comments on CFEC in terms of planning, because he's been tracking it in that arena closer than I have.
Thank you, Cody. Yeah, I think I would just like to bring to council's attention the last couple of bullet points on the slide in regard to the climate-friendly rules and the way that they affect transportation planning rules. And the major one is that previously, when we updated our Transportation System Plan in 2014, for example, the transportation system design is based on the idea that you build the system that is adequate to meet the needs over the next 20-year period. It's a very easy-to-understand concept. It makes a lot of sense. But of course, the CFEC rules have changed that now so that the transportation system needs to be designed to ensure that it could not only meet the needs, but actually reduce what's called vehicle miles traveled, a very technical term. But it's basically miles per person of our population that we have over that same 20-year planning period. And I think some of the unknowns and issues of this are particularly a city like Walton, where we have a lot of employment. I mean, we have a lot of people on a daily basis that come into the city. And we also have a lot of pass-through traffic, given our location adjacent to I-5, is how are the details of those rules going to be worked out and how is that going to affect us? Because we have really a unique position relative to a number of cities, even in the region, but certainly in the state where CFEC applies. And so I think, again, you know, we heard from our DLCD rep who came here to the council and said that they would work with us. You know, so I think that we want to honor that commitment and work with them. The council, we've heard from you, we've heard from the community as well, that this is an issue that deserves being addressed. And so I think that our experience has been that it works best when we work together with our partners to find a solution. And so although there are unknowns, and I think that, you know, some of them are a little concerning as far as how the details are worked out, I think that it's best that we get front and center with it and be part of the group of cities that is figuring out a solution to it, rather than waiting for someone else to figure out the solution and have that applied to us. Hope that makes sense. If you have any questions on CFEC, happy to answer.
I guess, just I'm in, but part of the issue is, and you said it, the unknowns, right? Of like, how do you model that? How do you, and we just don't have an answer to that, or how much it will cost. And the region doesn't have, it's not like we just don't have an answer to it, that it's an unknown.
Yeah.
And the impact of the cost of that and how to prove that. And it's just, that feels concerning and overwhelming and big.
Thank you.
Council Brooks had a question?
Thank you very much for that commitment, and I think that we have such a smart, innovative team. And I'm just curious how you see the Climate Action Plan helping to inform that piece, or if you do.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think in our planning staff and other community development staff have met with the Climate Action Team, and I think that, you know, one of the, this, this seems like a natural action flowing out of that plan. I think first and foremost, the second aspect of the way that plan would influence a future Transportation System Plan update is that we see the Climate Action Plan flowing into additional comprehensive plan amendments, which then provide guiding policy for how we update the Transportation System Plan. And so we actually already have a number of good ones that the council put into the comprehensive plan as part of the 12 in 2040 update, particularly around equitable distribution of the transportation system that will affect this future Transportation System Plan update. And so I think that we see more of that happening.
And I have a follow-up with that. I was talking with some people, metro councilors and others, because of the influence of of metro council on our way of moving forward through these rules. And I was just curious your thoughts around if carbon mitigation, if there's going to be swaps that we can do? Because in my mind, like, some of the work that you guys have done on flood abatement and planning around the, when we look, when I look through the Climate Action Plan and see where we have offsets and where we have risks coming towards us, it's flood abatement from the rivers, there's heat, and then there's also the carbon offsets of buildings. And if we can do things like green roofs or white roofs or the things that we're doing with the flood mitigation, can we, do you anticipate us being able to trade off in some of our transportation planning offsets? Kind of similar to the idea that Parks does with reducing lawns, getting credit, and then putting in multi-use transportation systems throughout. I mean, I've even had people say to me, less buses, more scooters already. So, and I'm just curious also about the scooter program and if there's any measurable outcomes that we have with that to start with. Those are my two questions. Thanks.
Sure. So those are, those are great questions. All the scooter ones, I'll punt on, maybe Cody knows. The, the answer to the question, I mean, again, this is, and I don't want to, the council voted to proceed with the lawsuit, to proceed with joining the lawsuit. There's some merits to it. There, I think there are simultaneously merits to, I mean, our council even advised this, that it makes sense to also move forward on doing the work as well. And so I think that one of the concerns about it is that the directive to cities is very narrow in scope. And so this idea of could we do some kind of trade-off kind of system is not really part of our direct application of the transportation planning rules. There are some avenues that are open to metro as far as how metro does it. But again, to Sherilyn's point, one of the concerns about the unknown is that metro basically had this kind of unfolded into their lap
Yeah.
in the middle of another planning process that they've pre-embarced on. And so I think the concern is just the speed with which these rules are coming and the unknowns.
Yeah. I guess my question is more about the application than the speed and the concerns around the lawsuit. I'm kind of wanting to understand what we can do versus like what we're afraid about.
Sure. And so I guess just to like, to bring it to your specific question about carbon offsets, there are, like, there is an idea within the rules, and I don't want to get too kind of granular in it, of having like alternative fuels and other ways of measuring greenhouse gases as part of the administrative rules that apply to it. And so I don't know that carbon offsets were specifically listed, but I have to imagine that's a means by which that could happen. But again, that's the metro level, right? And so, I mean, to some extent, being at the table and being part of the conversation with these ideas and solutions makes sense so that we're raising our hand and saying, have you thought about this? Because I think it's a great point. And whether or not it's in the OAR explicitly, I think. I mean, and that's, that's again, where I think we're hoping that DLCD honors its commitment to working with us is to consider alternative, out-of-the-box solutions that go towards achieving the goals of meeting the governor's executive order, right? We're all in that, we're all, we all, we're all wanting that, I think.
Yes. Well, it's interesting what you can do when you think creatively. I will tell you, I was at the League of Oregon Cities Conference last week, and they had a $65 million water plan that they thought creatively around and turned into a $7 million project with wetlands that was developed. And they included grants of $3 million, so they ended up only paying $4 million out of a beginning place, and they just won a big award. So looking at these, and this was in Primeville, and this was people that are used to dealing, you know, they're dealing with rural communities, and they have a lot of buy-in. So I'm like looking at Primeville as leaders today, you know? It's quite, it's quite interesting and amazing. Anyway, so I just want to bring it to the attention because it's quite an amazing project. Thank you.
Thanks. Council Pratt, do you have a question?
Yeah. Well, I'm wondering, like, when do you foresee this, if we move forward, starting in, in the timeframe, the length of it?
We can, I think, jump ahead a couple of slides and talk about that.
Yeah.
I think the idea being that a lot of the exercise of a TSP is data gathering and understanding the existing conditions. And so to some degree, we don't necessarily have to have full answers to some of these other questions right up front. And again, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. What relates to this slide is, I'm wondering if you think that, I know the CFEC thing is, there's a lot of unknowns and not defined, you know, objectives or reporting requirements, they're not really defined very specifically. So I'm just wondering if you feel like the timeframe we're doing this will match with some of that being clarified.
I think the, the short answer is yes. We met with a number of regional and jurisdictional partners, including DLCD, ODOT, Metro, Washington County, to kind of get their take on whether or not it was wiser to proceed or wait. And uniformly, everyone thought that, I mean, that we would be able to, that proceeded at a pace that allowed resolution of these open questions to occur.
I mean, I really like the idea that you're getting ahead of it and that, in my mind, it probably means the needs or specific issues with our city could be addressed upfront as opposed to, like you said, us being told to fit in the, you know, our circle into square kind of thing. So I like that idea a lot. And I, I still just meant, and I, I don't know the BMT, like, a lot of that, I would think would be a public transportation system that's out of our control.
Yeah, a lot of factors, a lot of factors in general, I think. But, I mean, again, you know, I think we're, we're going to have to work through it.
Yeah.
We have more questions? Thank you for your work on this. When I first got on council, I think the original TSP was like one of the first really big projects that I worked on, and it was fascinating, kind of grassroots staff, everyone coming together with a great vision for the city. So I'm excited to see it getting, oh, I apologize. I was just saying, I'm excited to see it updated, and I appreciate being forward-thinking about looking to see what we can do before everything else is resolved. But continue. No, it's okay. You startled me.
There's a good comment, no other one.
I'll just say, I think a lot of the ideas that I heard mentioned are the kinds of things we'd be looking at in the transportation plan and how to make some of those things work. And I think as far as the changing rules, at least what I've seen since I've been in the business, they're kind of always changing. And so whatever time we choose to update one of these, there will be some sort of key rule or legislation or measure that's been worked on.
Yeah, that's a good point. So yeah, basically, that's one of the key reasons why we want to do this update now, because everything is changing and we do want to be poised to be able to react to this. The older our TSP gets, the less flexible it becomes, so. Just really quickly, before I get into our timeline, you know, here's an example of the goals and outcomes from our original update from about 10 years ago. And this is kind of a, you know, a refreshed version of the lists of those outcomes. And, you know, captures many, if not all, of the goals under the council vision, but, you know, we want to make sure that there's access and mobility for different types of, different modes of transit, so that whether you're driving or riding a bike or walking or picking public transit, you have access to that and you can actually get around to the key places that you want to go. So that's one of the key mitigating factors to reducing greenhouse gas emissions is making sure that those options are available. So that's continued work we need to do there. We want to make sure that the system is safe for all users, no matter what mode they're using. Of course, in order to have a vibrant community, residents and visitors need efficient transportation to get around to all of the great places in the city. We want to continue applying that equity lens as we improve the system. Obviously, the movement of freight and goods and the ability to access businesses and key locations is a key to a three, thriving economy. Climate change in the environment is top of everyone's mind, so we want to continue to do our part to make sure that we're meeting the climate goals and reducing those GHGs, and that's all part of the work that we were just kind of talking about there. And then, of course, spending the resources we have available on viable projects that make the community a better and safer place under fiscal responsibility. Sure. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Council Brooks has a question.
As far as going to fiscal resources, I, it was an interesting conversation around the percentage of money that we get back from the county towards transportation and multimodal. And I was in a conversation with, with Commissioner Rogers around this, and he, he was pressing me about the percentage of money that we're getting from the federal dollars. And if we've asked for any of that money, the other cities are in their second dip, and we're still making decisions. And I'm just curious if we're thinking about some of that money towards this work as we're moving forward with fiscal responsibility.
In terms of the federal funding, are you referring to the IIJA dollars that came down, the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act?
Yes.
We have not pursued any of that at the city level. I think we've been sort of waiting to see what comes down regionally. I know that ODOT was handling a lot of the mechanisms to get that funding down to local jurisdictions. I don't know, Steve, you know more about that, or Mike?
I'm sure they have any projects that are big enough. Do you know, Mike?
Yeah, I think the, the IIJA particularly was for large, like, road infrastructure projects mostly. We took a look at some of the programs that provide funding for transportation system plans and this kind of work. I actually worked on a transportation system plan with state funding, which follows a more streamlined process than the federal funding. And in that particular case, it took about 18 months just to get through the process of developing the scope for the plan before we could actually get started on the plan. And then, once that happened, then the state had a lot of requirements for how things had to get done that didn't quite match the city's vision. And from what we're understanding, some of those programs, we'd be running into the same issues here if we did that. So our recommendation is to fund this locally so that the plan can really match the city's vision for the city.
Can we find out more information about why that is and specifics? Be helpful to me, especially when I have commissioners asking me what I'm doing.
Sure.
Thank you.
I mean, we can certainly come back with some information on that, but my recollection was that when that came out, we, we did propose the Boones Ferry Corridor for the IIJ, IIAAT funding. And in order to, and we put it in the, in the whole system, and it was not chosen by our representative Suzanne Bonamici. And, but it would have also added a number of requirements and made it, taken it from a $7 million project to much more, because we would have had to do the environmental, what is that called? The?
The NEPA, National Environmental.
Yeah, the NEPA process on kind of a local project, so it didn't, it didn't make a lot of sense, but it wasn't chosen anyway.
Yeah, I guess mine would be around the transportation system planning and the overall thing, and having NEPA as part of that, to me, doesn't bother me at all, my perspective. And then I'm just curious also, I mean, it's a different topic, but also if there's infrastructure money with the water systems changes that are coming down, if there's any applicable grant money from the feds. And, and I will repeat, some cities are going in their second round of funding, so I don't want to walk away from money if there's money there.
Yeah, you can definitely look into all the funding opportunities that are available, for sure.
I just like to learn about it.
Here's what we're thinking as a draft timeline. The key green arrow icon there is basically where we are at this point. So fall of 2022, we're hoping either late October, early November, to publish an RFP, seeking the services of a qualified consultant to assist with the project. From there, we would hopefully move into announce notice of award and move into contract negotiation, hopefully by winter of 2022, potentially early 2023. By early spring of 2023 and into the summer, we want to begin doing the updating, the goals and the objectives, reviewing existing conditions, begin to design the public engagement strategy, and do some initial public engagement, really the background work that's necessary to get the TSP up and running. Between summer of 2023 and summer of 2024, we envision that we will work on project refinement with council and advisory committees, move into some of the more technical work, and then we're targeting sort of a final public engagement effort in fall or winter of 2024 with council adoption of a plan shortly after that. So these plans can change depending on what comes up, but really, the key piece that we want to do at this point is get an RFP on the street so we can find a consultant to help us manage this process. Any questions on the timeline?
I have a quick question. Because I remember the initial 2014 process being so positive, I mean, it was long and it was difficult. I just remember a really robust community involvement. Is there any possibility we might work with that same firm for the update that we're doing? firm for the update that we're doing? If, I mean, I realize I have to go through an RFP process, but
it's always a possibility. Sure. Yeah. Depending on who submits a proposal and, and there is also the possibility that there could be a team of consultant firms. I know a lot of consultant firms are kind of working together and handling different portions of the update. So there might be one firm specifically focused on the public engagement piece and maybe another firm that's kind of doing the technical work and overall development of the plan itself. So we'll have to see once we get our responses. Who is interested in working with us? We have met with some firms who are interested in this work. So we know that we will likely get some responses, but.
They're out there.
Yeah.
And how do you, who chooses the consultants?
Mike, you deal with the RFP proposals a lot. Who do you, who do you usually depend on?
Sure. So one, it's, it's good to hear that you had a really good experience the last time around.
That's how I remember it. Maybe a mutiny back at the staff level, but I remember that. I remember it fondly.
So the way the request for proposals process works, we put out the request for proposals, RFP. They have typically about four weeks to put together their proposals of sort of why their firm is best for this project. And who they would choose for the various aspects of it. So a lot of them will have, you know, a planning firm, a traffic analysis firm, public engagement firm, and others that would be on the same team. They then submit the proposals and then we would have a committee of people, probably the three of us and maybe a few others that would then read through all the proposals and make a recommendation. And at that point, we would come up with who we believe is the top choice firm and then try to work out a project scope and then we'll be bringing it back to council for, you know, for your perspective or approval to go forward with the contract. So that's kind of the normal process.
More questions? I had just one that I thought of when you were showing some of the requirements for the new climate friendly equitable communities plan about specifically in the plan, how we're going to reduce vehicle travel and vehicle miles per resident. Is there anything in that mandate that came to us that calls in like TRIMED or other public transportation options to have them help us or have them give us an updated plan or a future vision of what they might be doing that could help us reach that goal? Because we really do, I mean, between the two freeways and the city being separated and all of the east-west constraints we have, and we have a really amazingly complicated transportation system around here. It's almost like having your hands tied before you even start the process to some degree. And they would be, I would think, a key partner in helping us reduce that. But if they're not sort of mandated or required to help us or give us any additional insight beyond what we have, that's not super helpful to our planning.
So they're required to develop some of their own plans on their update schedules. I think one of the things that a TSP can really do for us is it allows us to vision cast for our city and have it adopted in a plan that then holds a lot more weight when we start lobbying or try and ask TRIMET or others to provide better transit service in our area. Because that's one of the questions that keeps coming up is, well, how do we get people to use transit if there's no transit route?
Right.
You know, or if the one transit route that's available goes a complete opposite direction from where they need to go. Or if it only shows up once an hour and they don't quite know if they're going to be ready for it on the hour. You know, or all those other reasons. So this gives us a good opportunity to do that, to really make the case for the need for transit into Walton and come up with some ideas on what we would need. And I would assume that as we're doing that, we'd be working with, with TRIMET, with, you know, other transit providers as possible to really develop and refine.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay.
When you were talking about your question, it made me think about if we do do a comprehensive plan, we talk about linking externally, but also internally, you know, I come from Michigan where you cannot build housing and development without the transportation plan integrally connected. So moving to Oregon has been a really exciting adventure and our city has been at the seat of what can go wrong when you divorce those pieces in my mind. And so I'm just curious if we have the opportunity with a new transportation system plan concurrently with the planning that the comprehensive plan that we would like to take a look at in the next term. If there would be an opportunity to link those two plans more concretely.
Interesting question. I mean, I, they, they are integrated within each other. I think that I would say that I think, I think maybe and maybe just maybe just merits a little follow-up is just to understand a little more about what the ways in which you're thinking it can be updated. And the answer is, is that it could, I mean, it could be up updated. The Landis plan could be updated along with a transportation system plan. It's not scoped as part of this. And so we wouldn't necessarily rely on a consultant through this process to do it. We would probably have to scope it separately and hire like a sub consultant to be able to do it at the same time. But, I mean, it's certainly, it's certainly feasible to update our plans further. And I know that, you know, just to as a side conversation, I mean, one of the projects that we'd pursued grant funding for before was looking, analyzing, increasing residential densities in areas that were, you know, well-served by transit and other amenities, walkable shops and so forth. And so I think it's something that we have on our kind of, you know, our parking lot of things that we want to do. And so as soon as the opportunity affords itself to go back for either council direction, in which case we would budget for it and fund it similar to this exercise and or seek additional grant funding. And so it's certainly on my list and I'm glad to hear it is on yours.
Yes, absolutely. And I think that we have a golden opportunity with the two projects that we're talking about as well as the concerns that I have around tolling. And I think that it could also push that case because I have a lot of health and safety concerns around moving traffic that you would normally see on freeways diverted through where people are living and going to school and walking their dog. And, you know, and I think it's a way also that maybe we can push back a little bit on something that isn't really healthy for our community and do some really smart things around getting people around internally and, and to the back home from people that come here to work and play. Thank you so much.
All right, great. Thank you guys very much. Presentation.
Final slide this evening. So staff is seeking council direction to proceed with putting out a request for proposals to solicit proposals from and select a qualified firm or a team of multiple firms to assist with the transportation system plan update. There is currently just over 400,000 programs specifically for a TSP update in the Road Operating Fund and we feel we are well positioned to complete a TSP update at this budget level based on some of the research we've done around the region. And of course, after we complete the RFP process, if we are so directed, we would return to council to seek final authorization before entering into a contract with the selected firm. So no official action needed this evening.
Just one reiteration of the request to learn more about federal dollars.
Yeah.
I think they noted that down. Does anyone else have a question? Are you really, really done? I'll say something and it'll continue. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor.
When you're done, I just would, we probably need to nod our heads or something.
So well, we do or do not need direction at this point. All right.
It sounds like that you guys are all agreeing that. So that was what I was, like, this last slide is kind of a reiteration of what you guys already said.
Yes. All right. Head nods. Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to the allocation of funds to outside agencies. This is going to be a challenge because we've had requests have almost doubled in the last year, but our budget for this has remained the same.
All right. So Megan is going to help navigate us through this. Well, I'm gonna, I'm at least gonna start you off. Hello, Council Megan George, Deputy City Manager. And I've got a brief introduction to the agenda topic before I turn it over to you all to discuss. So the city council allocated $40,000 in funding this year in the budget to disperse to agencies that provide a variety of resources to the community. Included in your packet is a summary of all of the requests, which total, as you mentioned, $124,000 and 124,170 as well as each application from the organizations. The largest request this year was $40,000, which is quite, quite a bit higher than we've seen in previous years. And the smallest request was for $1,000. Most of the requests come from agencies that have applied and received funding in the past. We did receive an application from Rebuilding Together, but they did not apply in this last grant cycle, but they did apply in previous years. And then for the first time, to my knowledge, we also have an application from 12th and High School's H O S A chapter. So today I'm looking for direction from the council on the fund allocation piece. We'll bring this back at a future council meeting for you to actually adopt that before we disperse any funds. I do want to thank Nicole Morris, our Deputy City Recorder, for being the administrator of this process. She is on a well-deserved vacation, which is why you get me. And with that, you can see I've shared my screen. I'll plan to take notes and add in the funding levels as you discuss. I have set the spreadsheet so that you should be able to see the $40,000 decrease as we start allocating funds. So it should be fairly easy to track changes for that. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So in the past, we've sort of gone sort of council, almost counselor by counselor, if anyone wanted to make a change from year prior to kind of pitch their idea and see if it got any traction. Oh, yeah.
Starting bid, I guess.
Okay. Yeah. So what if, if everyone's good with that, we can kind of
Yeah.
Follow that.
My starting suggestion is that if we put in everything from the last year to the 40,000 and then maybe a thousand for the two new ones and then we have to figure out, you know, start from there. But people might you know, we have to reduce something or give less to those two new ones.
Well, yeah, we would have to reduce from something we gave last year to be able to find the extra 2,000.
Start looking at it and knowing what we did last year for those others.
Okay. So I guess that would be, yeah, giving everybody exactly what they received last year and, and picking either one or two
Then there's two.
To reduce, right, so that we can have the two $1,000 individual.
In my mind, they're all great.
They are. And I wish, especially when you read the request, you just really do wish that we had the funding for that.
Yeah, I would suggest also start with like what really is in Tuolton because that is easily, easily accessible for our residents and constituents here.
Right.
And then we kind of write out.
Right. And I think that is really good thinking. In past years, Mayor Bubinick has pointed out though, is because there are so few services in Tuolton that Tuolton citizens do make up a large portion of users of a lot of these services, even though they're not in the city. Just because we don't have, you know, like community action, things like that. We just don't have. Yeah. But yeah, it's like proportion of people from 12th and they use the service is a good way to look.
But I think it's good to see the little, those are made a little bigger nonprofits, more, I would say nation-wide sometimes.
Right. No, I agree. I agree. I think it's good to the ones that are here and do so much and are easy to get to in the city.
Can I make one caveat to that? With the Columbia Land Trust, they have opened up the backyard habitat program to Tuolton. So there's specific work that they've done that's new to Tuolton that is, that's robust. So even though they're out of the place, it's a scope of work.
Right. Does anyone have any suggestions or feelings where they would like to reduce?
Is that equal to 40?
Well, I think if we add right, see, because we started with what we gave last year, which would have been the 40, and now we've added two new charities that we wanted to each give $1,000 to. So we need to take that from something that we granted last year, either, you know, find four and take $500 away or do it in larger increments. If anyone had feelings about where they'd like to see the 2,000 come from, we can do it by tiny cuts or one or two larger. So does anyone have any strong feelings about how we do it or if we?
I just have
Go ahead.
I have one just point of note and all of, I mean, it's hard to take money away from anybody.
It is very.
But just one thing stands out that the, that the Family Promise at Tuolton Valley, which is a great organization, we bumped up their their funding last year compared to previous years. And I don't, I'm not sure why that was done, but maybe some insight to that might be helpful. Which knows is 3,3500 then 5,000.
I remember why. We took some money away from Community Action Network and we put money towards Family Promise because it was more local.
Okay.
And it was serving homeless families. And just FYI, I know that they're looking at buying a single room motel for homeless. So I know that they're doing some ambitious planning and programming. I want to say one other thing about them. They were approved for PAB, for Community Development block grant through the PAB. But then when the numbers came through from the feds, we had to reduce, we had a smaller budget than was forecasted. And they were the ones that lost out. So it was really disappointing because we finally had something in Tuolton and they lost out. So I just want to, that's, that's my little two cents on family.
Yeah, that's helpful.
They're all so deserving. It's really.
Money from other sources. So that's a place, you need, that is not what you're pointing to.
She was talking, I think Counselor Brooks was referencing the community action.
That they get funding.
That they get a lot of funding from other, even though.
No, they provide a huge amount of services and they're throughout the county, including for our area. However, they do receive these big grants.
Are you suggesting taking the $2,000?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying it's one place that
Okay. Well, let's, let's start there. Let's read. No, that's all right. I think we all need to figure this out together. So if we were to reduce the community action by $500, we're a quarter of the way there for funding some of these other areas. We did dub, we did double the Columbia Land Trust from 2020 to 2021. What if, what if we were to reduce that by a little bit?
I think we doubled it because they were doing service here and they weren't, were contributing a lot less than comparable cities. Comparable cities actually have them in their budget line items at this point and we're still doing it this way. Comparable cities actually have them in their budget line items at this point, and we're still doing it this way. So there's been a lot of advocacy going on, and they're going to be helping us with putting more into our parks and doing more.
Right. Just looking though, I mean, they're getting, we have so many that are Right, and I'm just saying, what if we were to reduce them a bit, because, you know, they are getting sometimes as much as three times more than some of the other local, like wheels on wheels. I don't know, does anyone else feel strongly about leaving that at three, or does anybody have a problem reducing it?
I agree with your line of thinking, Nancy, that I mean, it's hard to, so hard, but
I know, this is
But yeah, it did double. They are providing a lot of, lot of service. However, it is on the high end of what we're giving as well. And then to walk away from, you know, like the 12th and High School. Do they call it HOSA?
Yes.
I mean, to give a little there would be, I think, a good trade-off, especially because, you know, the work they're doing and the shortage of, of workers in that field is, I think that that's really important.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I like that line of thinking. So that puts us at $1,000 saved so far, so we need to find another $1,000 to meet the minimum for the two new requests. Yeah.
The Family Justice Center?
Because they want to build a greenhouse. I'm sorry, what?
I'm saying that Family Justice Center, they, we don't 45, well, I'm thinking more like, is that from Washington County?
Oh, taking 500 from the Family Justice Center?
I was going down the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking, since their county, maybe they get money from other, to serve the county anyway, we're part of the county. So maybe that we can take some $500 from there and put it for the kids directly to our, that's going to impact directly our community.
Does anybody have a major problem with taking the $4,500 for the Family Justice and taking down by just 500 and making their grant 4,000?
I, I'm proposed to take 1,000 from the 15,000 of the greenhouse.
Oh, yeah, no, but we're not giving them 15. We're proposing giving them 2,500.
2,500, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So this would just go down by the 500. Does anyone have a, a problem with that? Yeah, I'm sorry, we're cross-talking, and I apologize. I shouldn't, I shouldn't be thumping. So what I, the last suggestion was for the Family Justice Center to take the proposed grant amount from 4,500 down to 4,000, and that would secure another $500 credit.
Counsel President Grimes, the mayor had his hand up.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Mayor?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Just so you know, the Family Justice Center is not associated with Washington County. It's an independent 501(c)(3) that their sole duty is protect women who are subject to violence and get them through the courts. Years ago, we pledged this amount of money to Family Justice Center when they opened. They probably might not notice the difference in the price, but I'd want you to know what they do and how important their services are to the, the women in Twallington who are subject to violence from their spouses or partners. This is the only place they can go to get an advocate to get them through the courts.
I agree with the mayor.
I'm just, sorry, one second. Counsel Reyes?
Well, what about the Sexual Assault Resource Center? Isn't that similar to a domestic violence or sexual assault?
And there's also the, you know.
There's several duplicate services that I'm, I'm trying, trying to like, bring up to the, to the attention. I know that, thank you for clarifying that they're, they're own independent 501(c)(3), but I'm just wondering if we're duplicating services or if there's something that's already in Twallington, or I'm, I'm just don't, you know, it seems like we're, we're supporting the same cost, but different nonprofits have different names.
My understanding is that, so the Family Justice Center, the FJC is the umbrella. It's the, it's the space, and they provide navigators and it's the organization, but then houses and the Domestic Violence Resource Center, the Sexual Assault Resource Center, and a number of other nonprofits. I think there's like 12 nonprofits, including the county, the Sheriff's Department, the courts. There's a bunch of stuff that's in the Family Resource Center, or the Family Justice Center, but they are separate entities. Even though they're, they, they serve the same folks.
Yeah, I think your trash center was a good, okay. That makes sense. I have a question for the mayor. You mentioned that when they were founded, it sounded like we pledged them a base number. Would we be breaking faith with them by reducing our donation less than 4,500? Is there some sort of a?
There's no, there's nothing written. It's just back, I think it was in the last year of Mayor Ogden, when the Family Justice Center was opened, and numerous cities in Washington County pledged certain base donations to the, to the Justice Center. So there's nothing written. It's just a handshake, if you will.
And they understood that they would need to come back and reapply every year, and that, that nothing was guaranteed. And they asked for a lot more than, than this, but
I'm sorry, I, how about if I recognize people, because I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing. Counsel Pratt and then Counsel Brooks.
Well, I'm just saying, if we left the Family Justice Center, could we take 500 from a somewhat related service provider instead?
What would be your specific recommendation, then? I know, that's the problem. I mean, I think we all feel the, the difficulty, but it's like, we need like specific recommendations.
You mean like maybe the Sexual Assault Resource Center is also?
And there's, they're, they're, I mean, for me, their remit is so tiny. I would prefer that we take it from the larger remit for the overall umbrella service. But that's just my thought. And then Counsel Brooks, what's your thought?
My thought, well, I have two thoughts. One is, I've had a few people that I've known this year that have been victims of strangling and shikking in our community. And I talked to our new police chief about this, and this is a very common thing. So I just want to be really clear that we have a problem. And I think with the heat and the stress that our communities are under, that there is an increase of violence. And I want to be really clear about that need. My other question is, we're down $1,000. Is there any way that we could propose adding $1,000 to our budget? Just call it where it is.
I, yeah, I appreciate the comment about the need being so great right now, and I think we all agree that the concerns right now are at an all-time high. Part of your concern is it that we don't take away the proposed funding for the Family Justice Center?
Yes.
And leave that, that way?
Yeah, I don't think right now.
Okay, so that was the first part of your question. And the second part of your question to Sherilyn is we don't increase the grants.
Which is $1,000.
It was what you approved in the budget.
Right.
Okay.
Just curious if we can increase what we approved, since there's a need.
Well, I I guess we can all kind of
This is a thought.
Yeah. Counsel Reyes?
Talk amongst yourselves.
Well, let's, yeah, let's be more organized.
Yeah, if we being from someone that is on the other side of these and writing grants and things like that, and campaigning and doing this for a long time. I mean, we advertised that it's a $40,000 grant, and it had, have to be that, to answer the question, why I wouldn't, even if it's $1,000 or $500 more from our budget, we have already said we have $40,000 to give, and we have to kind of almost take that.
Okay.
I feel as a then they would have asked for, oh, well, $41,000 or something. The other thing, I'm looking at these other nonprofits that are connected under the umbrella of Washington County. I think some of the, I, I guess my concern is like some of them are in Beaverton, Hillsboro. I feel like how do people get there in, in, to access these resources? We, we have to help people or the, the organizations that are going to take these people there. So I, you know, because they're so far away from our city. And I understand there's a lot of need there, but we, we still gotta find the ones that are going to try to help people get there to that. I always try and prioritize the city, whatever nonprofits, because we have so many, so little of those nonprofits that are serving people that can probably, they, after they don't, they can't serve them here. They, they can serve them in Twallington, then they can help them get to Beaverton, Hillsboro, Portland, in Martin Luther King, or some other cities. So that's, that's the point of why I'm thinking local and then kind of spread out. If we don't, if we can, if we had this verbal commitment with Washington County, then, you know, we're still giving them something, not a lot, but we're something. And then that can go to the, to the 500, right?
Right, so your, your, your suggestion is
Yeah.
Is the $500 from the family.
And then give it to a nonprofit that
To the Family Justice Center.
That's gonna
Okay.
Make a difference in their, here immediately affect them.
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate your thoughts. Very good. Cindy, do you have a suggestion?
I do, thank you.
And then come back this time.
I guess the ones that I feel like have the biggest ability, or the greatest ability and momentum to raise funds on their own that I see here, other than Community Action, which we've already taken some from, is the Good Neighbor Center and the Oregon Community Warehouse. And I know that's probably not popular, but I would propose taking 500 from each of them.
From the Oregon?
Fantastic donors and really a robust fundraising program.
Okay, so
Moving that towards, and not touching the Family Justice Center, nor the Sexual Assault Resource Center.
I'm sorry, so the, the Oregon Community Warehouse was one area that you sought to reduce. What was the other one?
Oregon Community Warehouse and the Good Neighbor Center.
Oh, okay.
I like that proposal.
Yeah, that sounds like it's got traction. All right.
Just a question about the rebuilding Twallington, I'm sorry, rebuilding Together, Washington County, Inc. So they did request funds in 2020, 2021, and we did not give them any, and they didn't come back next year to request. So I'm not really sure what happened there, and they're back this year for 2,000. But one thing I just, I wanted to mention is that just to tack on to Counsel Reyes's concern, they did state that they, they cannot guarantee services will be directed to Twallington. Those funds will come back here. So that was a little concerning, and I don't know if that played into previous decisions, or maybe we want to think about that one as well. Yeah, and we can't guarantee that it'll, yeah, that it'll come back here either.
Would your suggestion, following up on your statement, then be to not fund them at the $1,000 level and maybe fund the HOSA chapter at 2,000? Was that, is that?
Or at, at least leave it at not funding at all. And where those, maybe keep some of the other funds in other buckets, or yeah, or, or the latter as well.
Even 1,500 for HOSA.
Okay. Counsel, Counsel Brooks?
Where I understand what you're saying, I do think that when you're talking about preventing homelessness and homelessness services, whether it's directly impacting in your community or not, people that end up houseless are the people that are going to end those, lack of resources affect every city, whether it's within the city or without. So I think it's a really nuanced conversation and not so direct as we're talking in this moment. Well, I particularly liked Counsel Sacco's proposal of the two $500 reductions, and that we would be completed. I feel really good at that place.
So, oh, I think that was Counsel Hillier.
I mean, Counsel Hillier is what I meant.
I'm sorry, Counsel Sacco.
Just a follow-up. This is the type of work that they would do is to work on volunteer teams cleaning their homes, repairing siding. It's not, I don't know that we're actually putting people in homes.
No, it's keeping people in homes and keeping people in homes that are appropriate. And I will say that if you look at people's disabilities and look at low-income people, they live below standards by a huge percentage margins. And there's also situations in which homes become unlivable, and then people have to leave their homes. So these are, this isn't just like because I want a pretty wall. This is to prevent.
Right, I understand that. But
Yeah, if, if I might dovetail onto your thoughts, is, I think what you were seeing, and maybe what I was seeing too, is the fact that we haven't funded them in the past and for quite a while, and you know, we haven't, we haven't been onwardly working in a part of their active working budget every single so, I mean Okay. So
Counsel President Grimes?
Yeah.
The mayor had his hand up.
You're gonna have to jump on me, Mayor Boobinick.
No, there was, it was I was agreeing with Counsel Hillier, her suggestion, and the conversations going on, where you're at right now is maybe leaving that last $1,000 to the HOSA group.
So we would give the, your, your suggestion is give the HOSA the $2,000? Oh, just one?
Just one.
And leave everybody else. Leave Columbia Land Trust and
Okay, so say that one more time. So leave Columbia Land Trust. Right, and then leave Columbia Land Trust at 3,000. Because we had four areas we were going to reduce from, the Columbia Land Trust, Community Action.
I would say, I would say the, put the, take the 500 out of the Columbia Land Trust and then call it good.
And then just give 500 to the HOSA?
They got 1,000, because you're, you're at zero now for 40,000.
To clarify, we kept the original amounts and decreased the Columbia Land Trust by 500 and decreased Community Action by 500, giving us $1,000 that is now dedicated to HOSA.
Okay, that was where I was just wondering, which of the other two 500 we're going to cross off, but, okay. All right, so that looks like a good solution. Does anybody want to make a motion and see if they can get support for ending it on this note?
A motion that we approve.
What it looks like right now? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the distribution, as Megan so wonderfully has up there for us. Allowing us to give the $1,000 to the 12th and High School HOSA and taking $500 each from the Columbia Land Trust and Community Action Organization to fund that $1,000. Are we all in agreement? Say aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Well done. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, on this?
Yeah. Oh, okay, Counsel Brooks?
What, what was the last time that we increased our budget for? What's the history of our budget with the community grants?
I don't know that. I know as far back as the 2019, 2020 budget year, it was at $40,000. Sherilyn may have a further back recollection.
I think that we should think about it when we come to budget season about doing an increase because of the need that we're facing now with homelessness and with needs in the community, with inflation, et cetera. So just putting that in everyone's ear.
So it started out at, when I got here, it was 15,000, then it was doubled. And then we've had, it came up in budget discussions, and this last year, and you decided to leave it, or the budget committee decided to leave it at 40,000. So it did come up, and we'll make a note of it to raise it again if you would.
Yeah, Chris, thank you so much.
Well, at least bring it up next time.
Yeah, and see what
Yeah, see what Yeah, see what happens.
See what the committee. Good. Okay, so, um, we have a few minutes left. Uh, so why don't we do a quick agenda review? I'm assuming Counsel Hillier, you'll want to do the red ribbon week? Could you?
Yes.
Thank you. That would be great. And then, um, would someone particularly like, um. To represent the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation? Okay, we'll have, um, Counsel Sacco. Perfect. And then, uh, do we want to do some counselor communications now or do we want to save them and take a quick break? But. We, we can get a start on them. If you'd like to. All right. Um, would you like to start, Counsel Sacco? And we'll just sort of go left to right. And, um. While we're working on these two for the updates, can we kind of try to keep them to like. Meetings that we as counselors representing the city went to and then sharing information from the meetings to everybody's benefits that we can kind of. Keep them quick and concise and moving. That would be terrific.
Um, so I only had one meeting over the last week. So it was the Equity Planning Committee meeting, which we had, uh, last Tuesday. The committee will be in front of council. Either end of December, beginning. I'm sorry, end of November, beginning of December. Um, so it is, uh, pushed back. Uh, we do need to have one more meeting. Um, I think, uh, last time I was up here, two weeks ago, I said that we only had one more meeting, but now we really have one more meeting. We had an extra meeting because we do have some difficult discussions that we need to narrow down. Um, and. We, um, worked through, uh, some of that on Tuesday. Um, but we do need some more time. Um, and I just want to add that, you know, none of the decisions that are coming in front of, uh, council when they, when the committee comes here are made lightly. There's been a lot of. Tough, but great discussions, um, that we've had. Um, and it's been hard work and we knew it was going to be hard work, but I just really appreciate this council. Making the commitment to this group. Um, and I'm excited for them to share with you.
Thank you for the work. Did you say that they would be coming back December, you thought?
Um, either end of November, beginning of December.
Good, okay. I'd like to do that while I'm still here. That's great. Um, Counsel Brooks, do you have a list of things you've attended for the city?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for your work on the Equity Committee. It's really near and dear to my heart. And upcoming, we usually have a PAT meeting coming up this month that's been canceled. So just FYI, that's not. Happening. Um, I did. Join, um, Counsel Reyes at the Twolatinos. Meeting, which was a great meeting and a lot of fun. And thank you so much. Counsel Reyes, and I had to run out of there because I had another thing I had to get to. So it was. Um, fast and furious, but great. This is not a city thing, but I think it's very important. To talk about the League of Oregon Cities, especially since we're joining with them and lawsuits and things like that. So. There is a Women's Caucus that has been, um, stood up this last year after they lost their executive director after some. Anti-misogynistic statements that they made publicly. So they've been under interim director. I went to that conference. And was on the nominating committee for the new members, the second year of the Women's Caucus. I invited everyone from this council to consider. We have a new full board. I happen to be one of the new board members for the Women's Caucus for the. League of Oregon Cities. I'm really proud of that and I'm really proud of the work that we've been doing. In the Women's Caucus for the League of Oregon Cities. And I also want to say that there's also a People of Color Caucus that's been stood up. And there will be a young people's caucus as well, which for electeds is about fifty years old. So. Think about it, if that feels like something that you're motivated to do or to share with other friends of yours that are elected. Um, that would be interested. I also want to say. That I was nominated to be the first female chair of the Regional Water Providers Consortium. By Mayor Truax of Forest Grove. He is. No longer going to be mayor. He's resigning or stepping down or whatever you do. And, um, and served a very long time in public service. And I just wanted to thank him for his service. He was recognized at the League of Oregon Cities. And gave one of the most touching speeches I've ever seen. So if you have a chance to look it up, please do. Um, he's to me a very big inspiration and has been a huge supporter. In my service. And then I also want to say. It's an interesting day, Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, but it's Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, so I want to say happy. Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, here we are. Yeah, on Indigenous Peoples' Day meeting. So it's kind of interesting. And. Thank you to everybody that's been working on the Parks Bond Committee. And then one final note of personal privilege. Um, today we had Adam Schiff come to town. Congresswoman Salinas has her campaign office now in Twolton out of the whole sixth district, which is new district. She's chosen to move here into Twolton. So she's right on Boone's Frey Road and there's a lot of support with her. Not just in our state, but nationally because of the importance that the Oregon races have to do with the federal outcomes of the Congress. So I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hillier, I'd like to try to get like, we have five minutes before seven o'clock, not to rush you.
Ditto, ditto with Counsel Sacco.
Oh, brilliant, okay. Love it. Counsel Pratt?
I had two, um, things. I attended the, um, Blackman's County Climate Action Committee and we talked about resilience and stuff. Oh, I can't even say, really resilience and consumption based emissions. And a, a lot of questions came out about, um. Like especially with electric vehicle stuff out, like out in the forest and stuff. There's the ability to recharge things. So the whole. It's just like our rural transportation. It's like having infrastructure. So that was the gist of a lot of the questions. And then I went to the, um, Facebook Department of Faith and Blue open house on Saturday. And it was really great. It was a great outreach to the Latino community and. I really learned. That there's just a, there's a lot of crimes that happen in our community because people are afraid to go to the police.
Yeah.
And so I really commend the police chief, our new police chief for that outreach and, um, you know, helping people feel more comfortable. And, oh, it was great for you too.
Okay, and I don't want anybody to feel rushed. So we want to do, if we want to do communications after the meeting.
No, I can do just a quick. Yeah, uh, we had, uh, I went to Twolatinos and Betsy, as always, does a really good putting things together. We had, um. Uh, Ezo from, um, you know, market, Mark, um, I'm sorry, keep calling him Mark. Anthony. Anthony believes with.
Wow.
Who was doing the. Who talked about the climate change and the plan and invited, uh, the Twolatinos to go and, and be a part of that. And, um, it was a really good meeting. Um, they had a lot of questions as always. It just goes above. What, uh, we were there for, but. Um, it was, it's just fun. It's fun to see them. And also we, this is something that, um. Betsy, myself and another, another community leader, uh, started, which is a business for, for Spanish speaking business people. And so we met last Thursday and we had a ton of people there. I can believe it. It was at eight, eight thirty in the morning and it's just really fun to see everyone come in. And talk about, uh, their business in the community and nearby community.
That's excellent. And thank you for all the outreach that you do for that.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Really great. Um, I believe you're up for the pledge of allegiance tonight. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we adjourn the work session now, that gives us a few minutes and then we can let our immense audience in, which I guess is for. Oh. My apologies, Mayor Boobinick. You probably have a lot of updates for us.
Uh, just one. This been on grandfather, new grandfather watch. Uh, the last week, so no meetings and Counsel President Grimes has a picture of baby Harper. So.
I do, I do. I will share.
That's it for me.
And she is remarkably darling. Beyond super cute. Okay.
Did you get any sleep?
Uh, I did, but Donna did not.
All right, so we'll wrap up work session and we'll come back in seven minutes. And I think the whole audience is for, I don't know. Who might that be for, Mr. Pickery?